We'll call our next recorder. This is the Chatham-Fitzborough Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, April 25th, 2016. I'd like to open the meeting tonight with a moment of silence in memory of Max Carter, Owen Thompson, excuse me, who was a former board member and just a tremendous person in the community, Kiwanis, along with the Kiwanis, was for many years an employee of the school system, and he passed away last week. So if we could hold his memory and thought as we take our moment of silence for Max Carter. Thank you. Do you see?
[inaudible]
To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, in good will, for the living and the dead. Thank you. We have our agenda before us. We have our agenda before us. Are there any modifications? Or can we have a motion for the consent agenda? Move by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco, that the consent agenda be approved, which consists of minutes of the last meeting, a resolution concerning contract for auditing services, park signage, and a budget amendment for the elementary school sidewalk. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. We have several speakers signed up on the public expression part of our agenda tonight. Pam Cash Roper, would you like to come forward and speak first?
Good evening. To those of you who don't know me, my name is Pam Cash Roper, and I live at Belmont Point Apartments in Building 167, Apartment 108. I grew up in Chatham County, and my family has deep roots in the community. Growing up on a farm, I never imagined that I would live in a community like Belmont Point, but I am grateful that the Sultus Partners developed this community, which is behind Lowe's Home Improvement and the Carolina Brewery. For years, I was taking care of my old husband Keith, and we lived on family land in a trailer south of town in the country. After Keith died, I was alone in the country in a nice piece of property, but living in a substandard housing. It was a very difficult time for me and my family. Fortunately, in December of 2015, I became aware of the new affordable community in Pittsburgh called Belmont Point. The community had 76 rental units that qualify for affordable housing or income-based housing. I applied in December to get a unit, and I was very pleased to be accepted by the management company. In January, I moved into my new apartment. Since I've been there, I've seen all the units fill up, and today I live in a very diverse community with folks from Silver City, Pittsburgh, Goldston, and all over Chatham County. The community is safe, my housing is healthy, and it's energy-efficient. For example, my power bill went from $240 a month to $65 a month because of the energy efficiency. And that means that I can spend the extra money on my housing, eating at Verly's, and enjoying the town of Pittsburgh, which is wonderful. I'm well aware that everyone on the town board is in favor of affordable housing in Pittsburgh. From personal experience, I highly recommend doing another project like Belmont Point in the town with the Sultus Partners. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and you are more than welcome to stop over and take a tour from me personally of my unit and the community. Thank you.
And thank you, Pam. And I was pleased to be able to attend that tour, and thank you, Pam, for opening up your house. Yes. It's a very impressive, very impressive project. Heather Johnson is our next speaker.
I need a stepstool. Heather Johnson, I'm at 278 Hillsborough Street, and I come to you as a member of the Pittsburgh Business Association today to apprise the board of some of our plans, that are major plans. The Pittsburgh Business Association is working to have two large events that anchor downtown Pittsburgh every year. We know that the Christmas tree lighting ended up being a very successful event, and we have some work to do on that event, but the second is we'd like to do a Fourth of July-style event. And this particular event, so those would be the two large events. We have an annual budget of between $10,000 and $15,000, so we work very hard. First Sunday brings in a lot of revenue for the Pittsburgh Business Association. Our membership has grown from 10 or 20 members to we have almost 70 members right now, so we are bringing in revenue that way. And we've dedicated those funds to anchoring downtown Pittsburgh. So the reason I'm coming to you today is because we are committing a budget of $5,500 for Pittsburgh Summer Fest, Small Town Big Fun. That's our event, and it's July 3rd. We've been working very hard with Mr. Gruzbeck and Chief Crouchfield, and Chatham Park has actually committed $1,500 to sponsor our event stage, so it will be the Chatham Park Concert Stage. We're big time, our local band will play. We're looking to close downtown Hillsborough right in front of the circle up to Thompson. We can get into some of those weeds later, but as for not weeds, but details, our current sort of issue is that we are going to be working more with Mr. Gruzbeck on security, and we've committed to pay officers overtime. We've committed $2,520 to pay for these officers, but we really need to make up three hours' time, and that's about $1,100. And we're hoping that the town would find those funds maybe, you know, coming to you from an approach of security is really where we're coming. We're going to cover everything else, but we feel like we could get officers even from surrounding areas if we couldn't get them here. And, you know, I know we can't have that discussion now, but we are on a time crunch, and I hope that we can talk with you a little bit more about it. Our emergency is not your emergency, but most importantly, we want you to know that these are our two main events. We're already working on firming up the details for holidays for this Christmas season, and that's really what I've come to talk to you about. So hopefully, do you have any questions? I guess we can do it later.
I'm glad that you're doing the Fourth of July. It feels like there's not really anything to do right here in the neighborhood.
There's nothing in our area on that day, and we want people to keep coming. We want, we're going to encourage people to stay in Pittsburgh and play in Pittsburgh over the Fourth of July, and show.
Can you just announce to the board that there's a groundbreaking coming up too soon that you were telling me about?
Right. Is Leslie Oakley here? Leslie, so Leslie is on our committee, and she was the next person. Leslie, do you want to come up for a minute? She's the next person on the thing, but yes, our churches, our churches, thank you, yes. Leslie, would you come up and say something? She was next on the agenda. This is Sister Oakley that...
Hi. Thank you so much for giving me a second. I'm Leslie Oakley. I'm a member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and I am the Public Affairs Representative in the Pittsburgh area. And we do have much anticipated groundbreaking coming up for a new building. Right now, we're located just, we're just across down the road from the Hardee's. We're in a little rented office space, so we're very excited for a new building, and that's going to be coming. Actually, the groundbreaking ceremony is this Saturday, April 30th, at 10:00 a.m., and we would love it if you can come. I have some invites here I'd like to pass out. And then after the groundbreaking, we're hoping to get started with the clearing early May, and then we're promised in 360 days from then, we'll have our new building, so we're very excited about that. We will have our area leader there, his name is Steve Bowden, and he is over eight congregations in Chatham County and also in Western, let's see, in the Apex area. So he's over the congregations there, and he'll be speaking as well there at the groundbreaking ceremony. So we're thankful for all who can come. I have some extra handouts I'll put here on the back table, and if I may, I'd like to, can I hand bring some to you? Okay.
Thank you very much, Leslie. We look forward to being with you this Saturday.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Is there anyone that would like to make public comment that has not signed up? If not, then we'll proceed to the next matter on the agenda, which is mayor updates. I have been bringing to the board the number of interesting meetings that I've been to since the last board meeting, and since that last meeting, I've attended a joint DOT and Downtown Business Association meeting. I spoke at Kiwanis. I had the pleasure of meeting the Chatham County Utility Linesmen on the Monday morning at 7:30 at the Duke Energy Building here in Chatham County to wish them Happy Linesman Day, which we did a proclamation for at the last meeting. On the 19th, I went to the Pittsburgh Business Association meeting. On the 22nd, an infrastructure meeting for the Economic Development Commission, and over the weekend, a social event, but it was one that Merit mentioned, that the Tammy Lynn Agency for Developmental Disabilities, and I think we'll be hearing more from that organization very shortly. Are there other meetings that the commissioners have been to that they'd like to report on?
Going on the Pittsburgh Business Association and elected official social, so several of us are familiar with the board. I attended the Chatham Conservation Partnership presentation by a hystchologist from the North Carolina Museum of Natural History, and learned about the 16 statues of bronze that are here in Chatham County, and then on the Philtrick and White Forest earlier. I also had the pleasure of traveling around to several schools in Chatham County today, meeting some of their recent award-winning authors through the Chatham Youth and Artists Program, and so that was really great to meet these kids who are aspiring to be young runners. I'll be back to you this week.
Anyone else?
Let me just make mention of some upcoming meetings, and Matt is here, and he'll talk, I'm sure, about these events, but the next Tarbo meeting is the 19th. Matt, I don't know the location.
That is, it's here. It'll be at the Agro and Fish Department.
So that's on the 19th, and there's a public presentation in the Dunlop Building of the STIP projects on the 18th at 6:00 p.m., 7:30 p.m. The next downtown PVA meeting is the 11th, 9:00 a.m. at the Roadhouse, as usual, and the next Main Street meeting is Wednesday, May 4th, here, this room, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
I actually have a meeting on Wednesday, Triangle J Council of Government. I am the immediate past chair, so basically, we will be placing in nominations for the new chair upcoming in August, and I am the person that is the chairperson of that particular committee, so I will be attending that on Wednesday, the usual thing, at Triangle J RCP.
All right, and let's move to the next item, which is the public hearing for the rezoning of 68 Fayetteville Street. Is there a motion by the board to go into public hearing?
So.
Moved by Mr. Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Good evening, Jeff Jones, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board, for having me tonight. We did have a rezoning as REZ 2016-01, and the applicant is John Justice. Its location is two parcels generally located at 68 Fayetteville Street. Current existing land use is residential. There is a home on at 68 Fayetteville Street, and then there's a vacant piece of property adjacent to that. Both of those parcels are zoned R12. The applicant is wishing to go to a commercial zoning, which is C2. C2 is generally in the area, the parcel north, which is owned by the applicant, is C2 CU. South of the two parcels here is a corner piece, and that's on R12, and that's owned by the Pittsburgh United Methodist Church. And we have west, we have two parcels, one is on R12, and one is on C2. The C2 has a home on it that has been converted to an office, much like what the applicant is wishing to do with the home on at 68 Street. And to the east is C4. You move across the street on Fayetteville Street, you move into what we call the downtown zoning district, which is C4, and that is the Pittsburgh United Methodist Church property. Property has been zoned R12 since early '90s, as best I can tell. The future land use for the area has, it's designated for mixed-use town center, which includes categories of central business district of Pittsburgh and its surrounding adjacent blocks. Setbacks and on-site parking requirements are generally minimal. Mix of uses include both businesses and residential projects in the area, and infill development as development occurs. And key for the last one is adaptive reuse of existing buildings. The C2 is defined as primarily designed for major highways that run through the city and major arterial highways. This district intended to provide retail, office, and services that benefit the residential areas nearby, and then the non-residential areas as well. District accommodates intensive commercial uses such as shopping centers, strip centers, as well as freestanding or highway-oriented business establishments. The property is served by public utilities. Water and sewer are available to the property. With this being, converting from a residential nature home to substantial commercial, population change would actually be negative, so we would not have a population change of more residential uses in the area. And transportation patterns for currently what's there, not future, is no transportation changes in that matter. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing to hear from the public and possibly the applicant, I'm not sure if he's here, maybe, yeah, Jones here, to hold the public hearing and to hear from the public and the applicant, and the request is to recommend that this go to the planning board next week, and then the planning board will give you their recommendation next week, and then the following week, it'll come back to you for action, and I'll lead to you for the public hearing.
I will note that there is no one signed up for this public hearing. However, is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue, including Mr. Justice?
I consider getting straight forward. All right.
I might say something. I, my family and I worship across the street as a reunited Methodist church, and so I took a little curiosity in this project and spoke with Mr. Justice about it, and the church has significant plans in the future, a very grand, bold vision for growth. It does not involve that particular property, and I can't see any way in which that would conflict or that it might conflict with adjacent residents, because there's similar uses already in play with other properties nearby. And I'm in favor of it, but I recognize that we still need to hear from the planning board, and I'm here to hear what they have to say.
Other comments or questions, to the planner or the applicant?
We have a couple of observations. Jeff, if this is successful rezoning, that will preclude this property from being used as residence?
It will.
Okay.
Currently, the home has not been used within the last six months or so as a home, and the intent from the applicant, from what I understand, is to convert that to a commercial space.
Okay.
And then, let's say that commercial establishment were to leave, that would preclude the home from then being used as a residential use in the future, and the applicant is aware of that.
And, you know, I like the idea of adaptive reuse, but in the rezoning, there's no obligation, there's no...
There is not, right now.
So that may or may not be the way it plays out, but it's a good idea.
Sure.
When you say sewn utilities are available to the property, is the property served with public sewer?
I think, but how long is it currently with the public sewer? Mr. Justice, yeah?
Okay. And what would be the equivalent zoning district in UDO to C2?
I think it would be that...
Is it the neighborhood?
I think neighborhood is going to be where I'm going to focus this particular property on moving forward, and we're going to have a whole exercise on trying to take all these C2 uses and parcels, because that seems to be the zoning of choice in other years, and try to really find out which one is more neighborhood commercial and which one's more mixed-use commercial center, which is going to be more highway. I think if we had the UDO in play right now, I would have went neighborhood commercial activity center, and not a highway commercial.
Great, okay, thanks.
Further questions or comments? If there are none, is there a motion to go out of public hearing and place this matter on the agenda for the planning board next Monday? Yes. Move by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under new business on our agenda, our first matter is the presentation from Eco CP Partners, LLC, and I believe that Kirk Bradley and John Fugio are with us tonight, and look forward to hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, as y'all know, since the inception of Chatham Park, finding the right partner to do our commercial side shopping center has been, it's been a task, and fortunately, between Kirk Bradley, who I've known over 35 years, and John Fugio, they have made it really easy for us. We've probably had eight to 10 companies across the country that have shown interest in joining forces with us on doing a shopping center. First 45 acres that we're going to develop with these gentlemen is the piece that the account had, I think at one time it was the Briar Creek Shopping Center developer, and I think it came before a previous board, and I believe was approved for shopping center. It is our most northern piece on 15501, and so many times, sitting in sessions, hey, we like what's going on up in Chapel Hill, and we like Southern Village, and we like this, and we like that. So we said, heck, the best way to fix that is to go get the people that did that, who we know, and we know they do quality projects, and they're more local than most of us in this room, almost. I mean, they are, they're local folks. We're proud to announce that we have engaged with them in a letter to go forward with developing our shopping center on the first phase. So what I'll do now is I'll, and not only are they shopping center developers, they are community developers. Kirk Bradley, who I'll introduce first, is very engaged in the Lee and Chatham County education movement. He also is involved in Northwoods High School. So Kirk, without further ado, I'll introduce you to the commissioners here.
Brian, you got it. Okay.
Hello, my name's Kirk Bradley, and I live just right up the road, and I've been working in Chatham County for a number of years. The project that I've been involved with, that most of you probably are familiar with, is Governors Club. My family developed it. Our company is based in Sanford, North Carolina, so on the other end, I pass through Pittsburgh quite often, and stop quite often as well, including other places. But John and I have been partners for a number of years, and I'll introduce our teammates, and then I'll let John do the presentation, tell you a little bit about himself. Kevin Hine is the CFO of Leemore Capital Company. Lenny Causey has just joined us, and has over 30 years as a real estate attorney. And then John Fugio is my partner. He has a company, Montgomery Carolina Developments, a general contractor. But we started about eight years ago to develop projects together. The two of those that you probably have seen are the West Point Development near South Point Mall in Durham, where the Bonefish Grill is, and then also, John has put together recently the Briar Chapel Commercial right near the entrance there. So I'll let John go through our presentation here.
Go back to the beginning. Which one did you?
Go to the start, there you go. I was going to go back to the front. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors, our commissioners, thank you for having us. As Bubba said, we have been talking for several months about the possibility of joining forces with Chatham Park and working as the commercial developer in the early phases of the commercial areas. Our experience, just click this, and we'll move... We are, first off, going to develop the 44-acre parcel that is north of the Bojangles' former trailer park site. And going back to our experience recently, that's our development, West Point and 751, right off I-40 and 751. We developed the Bonefish Grill, and Aldi supermarket, a retail building with a Town Hall Burger and Beer, and a 30,000-foot office building, which is where our offices are. Our company, Montgomery, is, as we call ourselves, we have two companies. We have a national general contracting company, which we started in 1986. My wife and I own it. My wife's Christine Edwards, she's the president of that company. We built retail projects and office projects in 38 states. We continue to work nationally, and we work for primarily retail clients. We do a lot of work with national retailers that you've seen in the malls. We do freestanding buildings and large big box. We do a lot of work for Dick's Sporting Goods. We've done work for Talbot's Children's Place. Most of, we probably did 15 stores in South Point Mall, and we continue to do that nationally. Our other company is Montgomery Carolina, which is the real estate development company, and that's really the company that will be heading up the commercial development in Chatham Park. That company I'm president of, Christine is vice president of. I'm a real estate broker, as well as the licensed general contractor, and I hold all the licenses for the general contracting company in the United States. Years of tests and continuing education, which I still do. Currently, you're probably aware of the commercial area of Briar Chapel, which we are developing. Our company is building those buildings right now. They're scheduled to be open in October. Four buildings, all of them are 100% leased, so we're going to build that... So we're going to build that. We will stay and manage, which we typically do. We handle the design, we handle the construction, and then we do the leasing and the management. So we'll manage Briar Chapel's buildings after they're completed. Most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with Southern Village. In 1996, we formed a partnership with D.R. Bryan, who developed Southern Village. And our role in the development was to handle the downtown. And our company handled the planning, hiring the architects. We built the buildings, we managed them, we leased them, and we did that for 14 years. After that, we turned it over to D.R.'s company, and now Bryan Properties manages the commercial downtown of Southern Village. We still own the buildings with D.R. I live in Southern Village, but our job there is done. Briar Chapel is 100% leased. Our job there, at least that part of it, is done. Construction and the management will continue. And now our focus is Chatham Park. So we plan on, I mean, I don't want to say I'm going to dedicate every day 100%, but my mind is working that way. And when we move into a project, we dedicate almost all of our forces to it, and we focus on it every day and work it hard. That's how we ended up getting 100% leased at Briar Chapel. And, you know, hard work, luck, being in the right place at the right time. But we are very focused on our tenants prospering, working with the municipality. And in this particular case with Chatham Park, we're very conscious of the effect that we might have on the downtown. And we plan on keeping that in the forefront of our thinking as we develop the 44-acre parcel to make sure that what we do complements downtown and works with it, does not take anything away from it. It's one of the, in my travels in retail construction and commercial construction around the country, downtown Pittsburgh is a rarity in that everything's occupied and it actually has life. And I've seen numerous dead towns that look like that and have seen development move away and highways move away. And I can tell you that we've discussed that with the Chatham Park developers. Everybody's conscious of it as we go forward. So we plan on having as much cooperation with those tenants and speaking with them as we can. We deal very openly. We'll answer questions. We'll, our office is open to anyone who wants to come over, see plans, see what we're doing, see what we're thinking. So we look forward to a successful project here and continuing on with Chatham Park development. And we're available to answer questions for anyone. I didn't finish it, did I? Sorry. Another picture of Southern Village. This is Symphony Night, which has been a huge success for us. And then continue, all of the events there will continue. I'm also conscious of not affecting Southern Village, which is kind of an interesting dilemma I have. On Briar Chapel, I put four restaurants at Briar Chapel, and none of my tenants in Southern Village got upset. So they all know each other. Hopefully, what we do here in Chatham Park will not upset anybody else, especially my partner. So just to describe the development company, Kirk's company, Leemore Capital, has partnered up with Montgomery, and we are the managing members of the Echo Group, which is the development entity that will develop Chatham Park. Some of-- Sorry, Kirk, this is-- Really, you spoke about your company. You can do a better job there.
Thank you, John. And I'll wrap this up so we can take questions. But I think John's combination of experience and mine, being local, being in a town like Sanford, we understand the importance of downtown districts and working with them. I think if we're successful, what we envision, that it will help all the businesses in Pittsburgh do better because they'll bring more traffic south and west from other population centers in the triangle. We've been involved in a lot of different commercial sectors. This is my office building. This used to be a service station. We've built a nice building that we think enhances the downtown area of Sanford.
Point it over here.
Oh, gee. I mentioned Governor's Club. As you know, Governor's Club is more than the gated community. We have a commercial core there as well, and several other neighborhoods that are developed with sidewalks and front porch homes. So we are very familiar with that type of development, which I think is part of what's going to be one of the hallmarks of Chatham Park and the residential area. Also wanted to know that I've been very involved with the Chatham Economic Development Corporation for the last eight years, have been an investor in that, and also spearheaded the development. You may have heard of the Central Carolina Works Project, where we raised seed capital so that Central Carolina Community College could hire nine career readiness counselors that they put into the nine public high schools in Chatham, Hornet, Lee County, to help those students and their families understand about the Career and College Promise Program that the state pays for that allows students that are in the junior and senior year in high school to take community college and earn up to a year's worth of college or technical certificate credit before they graduate for free. I'm also a member of the Chatham Public Education Ambassador as well. There it is, the team members. I think that's it. So we're a well-financed group. We've got a lot of experience, and we're excited to be a part of working with Tim and Bubba and the Chatham investors, all Chatham Park investors, and bringing the commercial areas to reality. So John and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does the board have questions for Kirk Bradley?
I have one, several. Can't get them all out. You mentioned the aspect of town Pittsburgh as a business owner there. What ideas are you headed to help downtown Pittsburgh enhance our downtown area? What direction are you headed, I guess, more or less?
I'll take-- We don't have a direction yet. We need to speak with them and understand more about what they need and how we can work with them in a productive manner. We made this agreement a week ago, and we really did not want to do anything until we had this meeting. So you knew who we were before we started talking to people and had you hear it from the outside. So we plan on doing this and then getting out there and mixing it up, understanding. So I don't have an answer for you right now, but I will.
Fair enough. Yeah.
Curious about some of the technical aspects of the Southern Village downtown section. How many acres is that, that single ring?
17.
17. How many tenants do you have there? How many commercial tenants?
I can't count them in my head, but I want to say we've got 17 or 18.
Okay.
We've got a couple of large ones, a couple 30,000 footers that take up a lot of space.
How many residential units are in that area?
1,178.
In that circle?
Oh, not in the circle. That's the entire development. There are 330 apartments, and I want to say about 100 condos and townhomes. And the rest are single-family homes. But there's 1,178 in Southern Village.
How many acres is the park downtown?
The center where the symphony plays? It's one acre.
That's one acre.
It's one acre. Put 3,000 people on it.
Other questions from the board? Does the board want to open it up for questions from the public?
Sure.
Gentleman in blue shirt?
Yes. Do you foresee that the area that you're developing north of Pittsburgh to be similar to what Southern Village is, or is that a total new design?
It'll be similar, but different. We learned a lot in Southern Village. And what we have learned is that the buildings are very important, but the environment outside the buildings is just as important. So we're not only going to focus on the building design, but what we do with the grounds and the environment and how people will be able to come and gather and stay and talk. You know, in Southern Village, we have the one acre in the center, which is really where everybody gathers. But we learned that we could have done a better job, and now we're systematically going around and trying to fix that. We just learned a lot. So it'll be vibrant.
Would you, in that 45 acres you're talking about there that's north of Bojangles', would you-- would that be mixed residential as well as commercial and, you know, restaurants and--
That's the plan.
--acres like you have up there?
Yeah, that's the plan. I mean, we have 17 acres in Southern Village with that 44 here. So we're expecting we can do, you know, a better, bigger job and do a better job with the public areas. You know, lay them out a little differently. So accommodate parking a little better than we do there. That type of thing. Yeah, ideally, you know, good mix. So there's life all the time. Residences at night keeps the commercial area secure. It's kind of like automatic security, so. What would you like to see happen in downtown, existing downtown? I don't know. I don't know. I would say that my initial look at downtown is that the outside, the businesses are great, at least the ones I've been in and eaten in. But the sidewalk is a problem. And, you know, if that could be fixed, where it could be more conducive to the public, you know, and it's a tough one because the roads there, there's always so much room to work with. But bringing the businesses more outside of their space, that's an answer. That's all I can give you right now.
Would you be open to negotiating types of things that you build versus what might be of interest to downtown?
I'm not sure--
Well, I'm thinking that's why I'd love to see a situation where the old town was the default location for things that served this whole area. Not been put on the table, not been discussed. Just my notion of what would be a real nice arrangement.
That makes sense. The only issue I would see with that is it's limited by its own size. So there would come a time when everything else would outgrow it. But if it could be established early on to do what you're saying, then it would sustain.
Right, I think to sit down, I think that's part of our process.
Yeah.
We want to get started and maybe understand a little bit more what you're thinking and how that would work together.
It's an interesting thought.
You get feedback from our commissioners, but surely, within the community, there's got to be some desires.
Sure.
I'll say one thing in the experience that I've seen in Sanford and other downtowns is that unfortunately, we all like historic buildings and want to keep those forms, and it doesn't lend itself to certain uses that work better in a greenfield circumstance. So I would hope that they would wind up being, at the end of the day, very complementary with each other, that there's things that really work better in an existing historic downtown that couldn't, that-- and so, and we figure those out and try and work cooperatively, I guess. We just need to understand a little bit more what the town's looking for and individuals as well, within those citizens.
I think Commissioner Michael Fioco and I toured the downtown of Sanford with your mayor not long ago, and were very, very impressed, especially with the historic renovation of the building there on, is it Steel Street?
Chatham Street, the Buddy Factory, that we put all the--
With all the planning and zoning and infrastructure, offices in there. That was just magnificent. Absolutely beautiful concept. And I think that what Sean Justice is saying is that it would be wonderful to be able to have a sense of coordination between us so that there's not duplication of effort and that there is, to the extent that can be done, the preservation and the uniqueness of Pittsburgh, the eclecticness of Pittsburgh, which obviously is one of the reasons you all came here to start with.
Absolutely. If it don't be easy to do, we'll be glad to do it. That's why I think Tim and Bubba picked us. They wanted someone that had a little more sensitivity to that. And, you know, the other thing is, we live here now, we plan to live here later, and so we want to do something that everybody, to the extent possible, is happy with and work to make things enhance what's already there. So we'll work hard on that.
I'm happy to hear you identify the sidewalks as an issue and recognize that. Something we are thinking about as well, is included in our downtown vision plan. If anyone wants to take a look at that and then think on that, because one of the things we're doing with the NCDOP is trying to get funding for the improvements. And specifically right now, we're trying to get funding from them simply to do a survey so that we could have something in hand that we could decide on. So glad to see you recognize that as a need. The other thing I wanted to ask, and I think the gentleman in the audience asked it, was it, are you looking to have a grocery store in your property in 44 acres?
We are. And we intend on, you know, beginning discussions with several grocers after tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Let me bring up one other, one other thing that was important when we started.
Our dialogue with Kirk and John is that a hotel was really paramount on our list of things we wanted. They developed, hired a hotel over there across from 751. And yes, a hotel is in the initial plans of what we're doing. So the shopping center section itself would house a hotel component. Hotels right now don't model out well as far as the economics. Reason is not one here now. But when you put the mass of a shopping area and services close by, the hotels then start saying, hey, now we have a reason to be here. So that was really one of the primary things. You don't want to get ahead of these guys, big announcements. But a hotel is not done, but a hotel is very much in the mix. And it's one of the things that we'll be working with John and Kirk on in the coming months to house a site that would have interconnectivity with all of the shopping and restaurants and other services that would be available. Also, one other thing, before they wanted to get started, they wanted to meet the staff. So they have already met with Bryan and both Jeff, and they insisted on coming to meet with you guys tonight, which is why we like them. And we have firms out of Atlanta, and we have people from Dallas. Everybody wants to come in and do, you know, a big project. This is a neighborhood program. So we're going to take it easy, and we're going to do it with folks that know how to do it and understand the culture of this region and live here. So I wanted to bring up the hotel, because I know that's something everybody's excited about.
Thank you, Bubba. And I would like to encourage y'all, Bubba, I appreciate that point. Encourage y'all to touch base with the larger nonprofits in the community because there is a real need for that lodging. And the Carolina Farm and Storage Ship Association in particular holds an annual gathering, 700,000 people. And I'm not sure that they could do it here in town, but I know that they've wanted to for a long, long time. for a long, long time. And there are other organizations that would also like to do large gatherings.
I know there's one area that I feel that we lose a lot of income is that people travel to Chapel Hill for hotels when there's a need to have, but I feel like we lose a lot of revenue. Like in Farrington, there's multiple weddings at the weekend, and they're bumping people into hotels in Chapel Hill. I'm like, oh, do they come and go all year?
I'm really encouraged to hear that you all are someone local that has, that in mind the small-town atmosphere, the village atmosphere, what you've done in Southern Village. I think that's very nice. I like the South Point. All of those areas that you've mentioned, I'm very familiar with those. And I do feel encouraged that you all will consider downtown with every effort to make sure that it's not one where everything goes out and not enhanced by downtown, which is really important. And the idea of a hotel, I mean, that couldn't be more timely, because everyone has been asking for that for years and years. So basically, I'm really encouraged that you all are considering all of that. You're going to meet with the downtown merchants and talk with them about things and what they anticipate from you all and exchange ideas. I'm very encouraged about that.
Are bike lanes going to be a part of this development as well? Or connectivity? I know that there's part of the plan with Chatham Park is to have multiple lanes and everything.
Yeah, I think that pretty much would have to happen. And the retailers want that now. I mean, that's actually part of the whole retail mentality is the connectivity.
Talk about the, the, the bike breakaway line?
Talking about Chatham Park.
Are there further questions?
I do have some questions. I'm mindful and appreciate, Mr. Fugo, that you emphasized that you haven't had these conversations that you really want to have with local folks, and so your plans are in flux. But I'm curious to what extent you've thought about density. And I think somebody mentioned the mixed commercial and residential.
Well, we've got approval for 250,000 feet, give or take, on that site. And we don't intend on exceeding that unless, you know, a mixture comes in that is just a must-have in that equation and it works with the parking. But as far as the density, it's a, I don't know, I don't think I can answer that for you yet, other than it needs to feel, I don't want to use the word intimate, but it needs to have that feeling, needs to feel comfortable, and it needs to be well-witted and not spread out, which means some underbuilding parking, that type of, we don't, we don't plan on looking at aerial photos of Fields Blacktop. So.
Want it more urban, less suburban strips and, we don't want that.
No, I'm not answering your questions clearly, but I'm telling you what I'm feeling right now.
I respect that. And I really want to encourage those conversations to unfold and that collaboration to proceed. I'm very excited about this partnership, the success of Governor's Club is reassuring. Southern Village Market Street and the new commercial developments there at the Veranda, they're impressive, they're attractive. Southern Village is a great place to spend money. And I'm very excited about what I've read about Veranda. And I really admire the hard work that I imagine goes into that kind of development that brings together such a diverse and successful array of locally-owned businesses. And I'll be honest with you, I find that much more impressive than the typical, what I perceive to be lower-risk, lower-reward style of development filled with Walmarts or mega groceries or otherwise, I'll call them undistinguished local chains, or national chains, undistinguished national chains. And I feel rather strongly about this, the emphasis on local ownership. And the data from studies that I've read show that these locally-owned businesses return so much more to our local economy in terms of wealth to the community. And so I'd really like to encourage you to reach for the stars here in Pittsburgh. We've got tremendous talent, skills, creativity, and I feel pents up demand for unusual commerce here in Pittsburgh. And Chatham County and the broader Piedmont. So I just really want to let you know that if you want to do things differently as you've done in Southern Village and Veranda, I'll be here to work with you.
Thank you. I could tell you, the locally-owned businesses, in our opinion, only succeed if you give them the right building and the right environment. If you put them in a strip center block building, no personality, excuse me, and people won't want to even turn off the highway to go to them, they're not going to succeed. So we decided to spend the money to do nice buildings, to create a place where people want to go. Because when you're dealing with these locals, even when it's their second or third location, there's still a lot of fear, there's still a lot of anxiety, and it's not just about how inexpensively you can put up the building and get them to sign the lease. You really got to look at it long-term. And one thing that we don't want to happen is we don't want any spaces going dark, because that doesn't help us at all or anybody. So I hear you. They will show up and they'll, I mean, we've done plans and we've had a bail at the last minute just because they couldn't do it, and then the next one could. So it'll happen here.
I appreciate it. Did it make very well be higher risk? I recognize that.
It's going to be a risk, and it's going to be up to us to mitigate it with what we put them in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just one comment. We did just sign this letter of intent two weeks ago, and since that time, we've met with the public staff and now with y'all. So we want to meet with the downtown Pittsburgh Business Associate and pay everybody, but give us, you know, 30 or 45 to 60 days to kind of get organized so we have a framework to do that in. So I just want, didn't want everybody, we haven't, we're just getting started, and so we do plan to meet with everybody, but we need a little bit of time before we're ready to do so. So please bear witness. Thanks, Freddie.
The next matter on the agenda is consideration of the state transportation improvement projects. Jeff Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Board, we'll pivot a little bit from land use and go to future transportation projects in the county and the town. This is a project that's been ongoing for several years, and specifically, this set of projects within the last six to eight months. This is our transportation improvement projects, 4.0, so it's the fourth rendition of projects that the Triangle Area Rural Planning Organization, TARPO, has put together along with county staff and Siler City. Essentially, in the staff report, I gave you a list of the schedule for implementation of prioritization 4.0. And we're at the bolded bullet point, which is each county or municipality will approve a ranked list of top 10 projects and submit that to TARPO. And we're in that late March, early April timeframe. We thought we were going to be able to come a little bit earlier to you in that late March timeframe, but the state withheld their ranking system from TARPO for a number of weeks, so we're a little behind schedule a little bit. Next will be to have, so tonight, we're asking you to look at the list that the towns and the county put together along with TARPO and endorse that list of projects. Then we'll meet, we'll have a public meeting, as Commissioner Fiocco pointed out on the 18th, for the public to be able to come and voice their opinion. We'll then have a TARPO meeting on the 19th to further go over those scores. So how do we get to where we are today? Again, back in the summertime frame, TARPO along with the towns and the county put together a working list of projects that would be submitted to DOT for scoring. Those projects, most of them carried over from projects in the past that were not funded in 3.0 or other funding cycles. And then there was an opportunity to put forth additional projects for consideration. The, and I have Matt here from TARPO, he can help if I get off track here. Those projects were put to DOT and in the late 2015 timeframe, and we got those rankings back within the last few months, few weeks. There were 12 projects initially that were ranked by DOT. The top 10 projects are what we're asking you all to endorse. And our methodology for the county and the towns, as we got together, how the municipalities and the county would rank the projects would be to essentially take the ranking system from DOT and let that be our guide. In the staff report, you can see that there was a top 10 list that came, that came together from the ranking system. Essentially had Siler Cities Airport Runway Extension Number One, all the way down to Number 10, which was bike lanes on Hamlet's Chapel and Jones Ferry. Chatham County pulled the Number Four project from their list, which was, let's see, I want to say the interchange at 64 and 751. That project did not go through their normal public process of going to their transportation committee. So they pulled that all together. And essentially what happened, once they pulled that project off, another project that was funded from a different cycle, we were left with 10 projects, because we removed one and one moved to a different funding cycle or funding program. We were left with the top 10 that are under consideration tonight. One being Siler Cities Airport Runway Extension, all the way down to 87 Modernization Improvements. There are a couple of particular projects that are of importance to Pittsburgh, which is Number Six, which is the Pittsburgh Moncur Road Modernization Improvements, and that Number 10, 87 Modernization Improvements. These are, these are the projects that are before you for consideration. Again, Siler City and the county have both held their public meeting, or their meetings with their boards to get endorsements, and those two boards have endorsed the projects so far. I'm going to try to field or answer any questions that you have, and Matt can help me answer those, but I'm here to sort of guide us through this process. This is something that, again, this is the fourth rendition. Stuart came to this board a couple of years ago, asking for an endorsement of similar projects. The way, the mechanism for the projects getting ranked is different now. And if we get into how that's different, Matt will be able to help me with that, because he was, he was integral in both processes. But we can certainly explain the differences between 3.0 and 4.0 if we need to.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one. Jeff, on the Number Eight Improvement to the Sanford Road in Pittsburgh, is that considered from the courthouse circle?
I can't remember. Matt, do you know which? I believe it is from, there's a spot down there where it goes over a creek, and it's from that south down to where 87 ties it.
And there's the three lane.
Is that? I was going to say. Three lane, four lane?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that, that project as well.
And Number 10, that's very high on my list. As everyone knows, that I've been pushing for that truck route. What do we need to do to move Number 10 up?
Well, I'd like to endorse that as well, because I think it's corollary to the downtown vision plan. There's a lot of concerns about trying to get traffic out of downtown. Trying to make improvements to downtown, this would be a perfect opportunity to marry this to. I think Matt can give us a better explanation of how these were ranked and why 87 is Number 10, and then kind of maybe go from, how do we get it up if we can? I'll turn it over to Matt.
Let's focus on that latter part.
I've heard that you've kept low on the list after several weeks, but I was thinking you've got a bunch of the top five, and I think we're at the bottom.
So the, kind of going back to what Jeff said earlier, the list, the ranked list that was put together here and is presented to you was based entirely on how DOT scored them. So we just put them in the same order that those DOT scores came out. And I can tell you, out of the 50 projects we had in the whole RPO area, that 87 project came in dead last.
50th?
50th. So, yes, we could rank it higher. Ranking it higher could mean that the RPO could put points on it. But I'm here to tell you today, even if the RPO did put points on it, because the way this works is a certain part of the score is based on DOT score, and then there's another piece of the final score based on how the RPO gives points. Even if we put as many points on it as possible, it still would not be enough to get over that hump of scoring so badly on the DOT points. So I think in terms of how to deal with NC 87, there's sort of two things here. One is, there's the idea about making that the signed truck route. So one sort of alternative to look at is, is it possible to sign that as a truck route without making physical improvements to the road? Is that even a possibility? And I don't know if you've had that conversation with DOT yet or not. I'm not privy to what's been discussed. But the other side of that, as far as the physical improvements, our next opportunity to try to make that happen would be in another two years. Well, really, in another year, when we get ready to submit our project list for the next round of this for 5.0. And I think at that point in time, we could look at kind of narrowing down the scope of the project. I think if we can kind of limit the area we're looking at and the specific improvements we're looking at, we can reduce that cost, and that will help it to score better next time around. If you look at the description that's in there from this time, it's extending all the way from 902 all the way up to Alamance County. That's a very expensive project, which contributes to the bad score.
I think that Number Six and Number 10 really could tie them together, because the Pittsburgh Moncur Road, which is also US-1, it'd be easy to use that as a truck route going from US-1, 751 over to 87. That's just a natural truck route. And I don't know if that's ever been presented, that those two are sort of connected because of that potential for a truck route.
Well, and part of the difficulty we run into is that DOT scoring. Well, and part of the difficulty we run into is that DOT's scoring doesn't really take into account any of these sort of qualitative things. It's all data, it's all about congestion and crash statistics and stuff like that, so.
It's kind of not interesting. Downtown Vision Plan is something that they're.
As far as how the scoring happens, yeah.
I think we could score very highly in the congestion category with trucks at 10. But what does that give us?
So what does?
The fact that we have such congestion in downtown, what does that give us?
Well.
Only improvements to the circle?
Two years ago, when we went through this, it did actually get a project funded on Hillsborough Street to do a three-lane widening section up there. So you can see how, you know, kind of having the congestion on that road did help your score in that case, but in this particular case, I think because of the length of the project and just it's probably too much to overcome the fact that you are getting some congestion benefit there.
And where does that project stay?
That project is funded, I want to say in 2019-ish, somewhere around there. I'd have to look up.
That was 18?
Maybe 18.
And that's the one from Chadon Mill North to 64?
Yes.
Now, is there any opportunity to reduce, modify this project at this time?
Unfortunately, at this time, it's too late in the process, so really our only opportunity is to wait and try again in the next cycle. The good news is that we do this cycle every two years, so, you know, I know that in the moment, that sounds like a long time, but in the terms of how DOT functions, and we're actually looking 10 years out in terms of funding, two years is not that long.
Well, strategically, do you find that we've got an adopted vision plan? It does encourage getting the trucks out of downtown. This route has been used before when downtown wanted the trucks out because of construction activities. Can that help in our scoring? Is that part of the data DOT's reviews?
That is not part of the data that is used. And it gets into, the data that DOT uses is all sort of data that they can get consistently on a statewide basis. So it's things like traffic volumes and crash statistics, and it's really hard to take an issue like this and boil it into some sort of data point that DOT can throw into their formula. I think what you might want to think about in the short term, in the two-year cycle, yes, we need to think about re-scoping this and figuring out a way to get in a better score next time. But in the short term, I think it's worth having that conversation with DOT. Is it possible to go ahead and sign that as a truck route without making improvements to it?
We're going to need a truck route when we're doing improvements to the circle. There's the truck, tractor is going to have to be rerouted and worked and all that, so there will have to be some sort of truck route, and that's the format I'm imagining.
And I do know that one concern is the bridge out there. That bridge is already slated for replacement in a few years, so that issue will already sort of work itself out.
Near the park.
Yeah. Robeson Creek, over Robeson Creek.
Yeah, that's right.
Which bridge?
I call it.
Tamara.
That bridge.
Well, I don't think it was long ago that the DOT granted some light avoid for the DOT for that bridge.
I'm just wondering, I've looked at these dates, I haven't checked this, but were these meetings held during a time when we did not have a planner? Is that why we're so low on the priority list, because we didn't have anybody to go to that for?
Unfortunately, I think that is what happened.
Stuart here, during a time when we didn't have a planner, so we got put down on the list, but we didn't have anybody to.
Yeah, I'm committed to being more involved, and you can ask Matt, I'm worried about all questions because I'm trying to get up the seat on the whole transportation plan for the town.
Yeah, this is before you. So that's definitely, oh, probably not that, not that we planned it.
I have one more question, and it's not in reference to this list, it's in reference to a previous list where, and I think, and that was approved from my understanding, the sidewalk, it goes from downtown all the way up to Powell Place?
Yeah. That's the 2019 project.
2019?
Yeah.
I wonder, could we add it all the way up through to Northwood? That's where I had requested a real deal.
So at this point in the process, no, but that's something we could submit as a project request next time.
In the next cycle. So around the summer of next year, I'll be coming to you all, and we'll be talking more about projects that we want to submit, just like that one, and others that we see around town, sidewalks or congestion management or bike lanes or anything like that. Not big projects that may not get funded, we might want to think about smaller projects that might score better. And we'll work with Matt and DOT to figure those things out as well.
Matt, if I may, I have one question for you. There have been two tractor-trailer accidents at the intersection of Highway 64 and 15501 just this past autumn, just during the short period of time that I started really paying close attention to local affairs, local traffic, as I was in the campaign for this seat. And it just so happens that from my traffic from here to our family farm in Silk Hope, I take that turn a lot, and it seems like it was improperly ranked. It just feels like, even in a small SUV, that I have to be very careful not to turn over. So it's understandable to me that two tractor-trailers have turned over at that intersection. It's very easy to get in a situation where you've got traffic coming southbound, you think, oh, I got to cut quick to get across before they come, because there's not a protected stoplight turn, it is a left turn. But in thinking about their very small matter, because in the grand scheme it's small, and speaking with others about this, it occurred to me that we don't have, what I think for our size or what we're going to be as we grow larger town, a proper clover leaf for on and off at each of those directions. Is that in the works?
I'm not aware of any plan to put in a clover leaf at that location. I do know there was a corridor study that was done on 15501 last year, and that intersection there was part of the corridor study. I don't remember the specifics of what was recommended, but I don't believe they were looking at any new ramps. I think they were looking at things like signalization and turn lanes.
Yeah.
Right.
I can just second that. I was at a meeting with DOT last week, they're looking at the intersection, signalization at that intersection, along with several more up towards Northwood.
It's also hard to get out.
It's dangerous up here in Northwood.
Thank you.
So I think as we move beyond the endorsement of the 10 projects tonight, we need to think more about transportation planning in the town. And where we know that there are issues or where there's been accidents, let's note those, because those might score better, I hate to say it, might score better because there's been accidents. Or they're just a small enough project that we might be able to get funded and move up the list. So at any point in time, send me projects or areas of concern, I'll start a spreadsheet, so when we're back at this next year, we can look at that spreadsheet. And maybe you can sit around the table and draw a map and have Matt involved and get some guidance from him on how do we bump up our projects to score better? Because we should do that.
That's a fine idea.
Yeah.
I just have a lot of questions, and I think that would be very useful. But if I may, I'll just plug you with a couple more.
Okay.
More, maybe Matt. Why is it that we would need a widen of those three lanes, two to three lanes at 15501 from 87 to Robeson Creek? Is it just the elementary school, this community middle school? Because it seems like there's not much commercial on that stretch.
So, this is actually a project idea that comes from sort of before I got involved in this. So this is something that's sort of been on the priority list for many, many cycles. I can't speak as to what the original intent was, but certainly adding the third lane there does help to get the left-turning traffic that's trying to get into the schools especially, help to get that sort of out of the way, so it's not impeding the other traffic. You know, adding a third lane doesn't give you a huge boost in capacity, but it does help with the flow. That left-turning traffic can really block things up, so.
And Matt, I have one question that maybe you could share with us. Out of the 10 projects that we have here, what's your experience of, which ones will be funded? Top two, top one, top four, any of those things?
Well, this is always a dangerous guess to make.
Nobody's going to hold you to it. I'm just, I want you all to sort of get a feel for when we rank these, all of them don't get funded, and it may be just one or two of them that get funded.
So, when I looked at the DOT scores and I kind of did some analysis of what I think the minimum DOT score that you need in order to reasonably have a chance of being funded, that score was a 25, and I'm looking to see how many, what's around a 25? So. Trying to find what the lowest Chatham project, so. There's an East Third Street Sidewalk, so your Number Two project. So your top two there on the list are the ones that have a reasonable shot. The rest of them, you know, nothing's ever impossible, but I don't think it's likely that they would get funded.
So I think that's important for us to notice. Even if we're Number Three and we feel good about that, it may not result in dollars being put on that project. So we really have to advocate and make darn sure that our projects score well enough in the future that we can beat one or two, while we know it might always get funded unless something happens.
Well, did the unfunded project carry over to the next year?
They do.
So we couldn't actually insert?
So they change the rules every time, so we don't know for sure, but in the past they have.
That's right, that's right.
Randy Goller?
Yeah, I just wanted to address a question that Commissioner Bonnies had. So John, back when I was on that board and represented the town, and Matt, of course, served with me, and Paul Black and Corinna Strong, the reason that that project came up, and it came from the county and folks in town back in 2005, was there was a desire to have bike lanes and sidewalks all the way from Horton, you know, that side of town, all the way to Powell Place. And so it's been a long slog. I think Pam's been on the board the entire time, but this has been on the project list. That's why she's asking about the one going to Powell Place.
And so by turn-laning, it would also have widening sidewalks?
It was intended to have bike lanes and sidewalks and via boulevard the whole way through, so that the south side of town got the same treatment as the north side, and you would have bike lanes and sidewalks. That was the reason.
At the time, I thought that was core pretty high, and then what happened, so where is it? It disappeared.
Thank you.
Because it sounded like that was something that we were going to get with them next.
My final question, sorry. What is modernization of Pittsboro Moncur Road?
So, modernization is essentially adding shoulders and making sure that the lanes are up to spec.
It's really dangerous.
Yeah.
87 to spec.
And I've got one other question. Of the 10 projects, there is a column called TIP number.
Yes.
And none of them, but for 87, have a number assigned, which needs to tell me it might have been something more important in the past.
So, I was able to dig as far back as 1996, and I can tell you that in 1996, that was a TIP project, which meant somebody at some point in the past had gotten that added to the state's funded project list. Now, the thing to understand is that in 2009, the entire system for how that list was developed changed. So prior to 2009, what you did was you put together your list of priorities, you went to your DOT board member, and they got your project added to the list. Since 2009, we have to go through this scoring system, and there are quite a few projects that were sort of legacy projects from that pre-2009 period that are still hanging out there with their TIP number, but they're not getting funded in the new system. This is one of those. I don't know what happened along the line as to why it didn't get built back in 1996, that's well before my time, but that's sort of the history there.
So we've been talking about a project that we think is funded, we'd like to see the benefits of being constructed, and we think it's in 2019, right?
So the one on Hillsborough Street is funded, that one does not have to go through this process.
So this project was funded in 1996. And is, so how far out can it, can the funding be allocated for?
So DOT allocates funds 10 years out into the future. If your project is within five years, which your Hillsborough Street project is, they consider that a committed project. They will not, they will, they've agreed that it's committed, they're going to build it. The stuff that's in the five to 10-year period, that could change.
So you need to get funded five years straight before you're committed?
Not necessarily, because there are opportunities, if it's a small enough project and things can shift around, your project might end up in the first five years on its first try, it's possible.
Thank you very much. Now, I believe we need a motion to accept and approve the 4.0 recommendation of ranking. Is there a motion to be made? Somebody? And a second? That fully made the motion, Pamela Walden seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
I have a one more quick question. Will these rankings stay the same number as they move along over the years, or do they get mixed or mixed up?
Well, next year, we'll be coming back, we'll be ranked all different.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the payment from 1998. Carolina Living and Learning Center, wastewater lift station, and Forest Main Upstate, Brian Grucek.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I forgot the microphone. When you're back this evening, I included some documents that try to explain an issue that was a surprise to us, or a surprise to me anyway, a few years ago. Back in the late 90s, the School of Medicine, they built the Carolina Living and Learning Center, which is, I think, also known as locally as maybe the Autism Center. They built a facility, it's kind of down at the bottom of that hill at Russet Run. At that point in time, the engineers determined that there needed to be a pump station or a lift station to get wastewater up that hill and then essentially to the town's treatment system and to serve that facility. At that point in time, in negotiations, the town and the School of Medicine agreed that the town could upsize the Forest Main and the pump station to accommodate future development. There was some back and forth, and Mr. Messick is here and I think has some additional institutional and historical knowledge on the issue, and is more than, I think, welcome to throw something at if I get off track here, but essentially, the cost of up-sizing the lift station was eventually agreed to be, we have a breakdown in one of the handouts here, eventually agreed to be $88,650 based on. and fifty dollars based on, based on the cost you see outlined here. There was a memo that Mr. Messick had, Mr. Messick had put together. It's also in your packet. I don't have it up right now. But the memo basically spells out the, basically spells out the agreement in terms of the town agreeing to reimburse the university for the cost of up-sizing those facilities. Now, again, back to nineteen ninety-eight dollars, the amount was eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The project was built, both the town and the university have enjoyed the services since then. However, in the meantime, two things did not happen. One was that the easement that the lift station currently sits on, which if you go down to the bottom of Russett Run, you can see a fenced-in area where the pump station's located, that essentially technically sits on university property. In order to grant the easement for that lift station and the force main moving out of it, the property division or the property office at UNC has agreed that the, that as long as the cost of up-sizing the facilities has determined back in nineteen ninety-eight is paid by the town, then they would, they would then release the easement for the force main and the lift station, also to a payment of an additional one dollar in consideration. The, the actual, the actual, the actual easement is also, easement document is then also provided by the state's attorney general and is, and is in your packet. The currently, the document is unsigned. If you were to agree tonight to reimburse the university for the cost of the upsize, staff would then prepare a budget amendment that would create a transfer from the town's, from the town's capital reserves to pay, to pay the easement, write a letter of agreement in turn to the university saying the town agrees to pay the easement, cut the check, submit the check to the university, and then the university would then in turn process this document through the state of North Carolina. Somewhat of a slow-moving process, the, and does take a little bit of doing. The, I know Mr. Rose from Preston Development has helped staff a little bit. Mr. Messick, of course, and the town engineer, Fred Royal and myself have also been working on it over the last year and a half, almost two years now. The, I believe I have to hit the board briefly on it. At one point in time, I think we've got everything in a row now at this point, and should you, should you agree, then we will, we will move forward with wrapping this longstanding item up and getting on with the others. So, with that, I'd open up for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Griesberg?
Brian, in the memo, it talks about the various iterations of engineering, and that the pump station was first designed at a lower gallons per minute, but then upsize. Can we confirm the pump station was built to that spec? Do we know that? You got a nod?
Fred has nodded.
Fred, okay. And is there a six-inch force main that's in the room? Do we know that too?
Can't recall. It's been a year and a half. I can go back and look.
We'd like to.
It was, it was designed for the full build-out of the entire sewer shed.
So, okay, that's the next question.
Yeah.
So, it's designed to accommodate the entire basin? And?
It's a six on fifty by one.
Okay. So, probably a six all the way back to the pump station. And do we still think that the pump station is adequate for the full basin build-out? Because Channel Park has come along, and I don't know if previous zoning would have allowed for greater density or land use plan, perhaps identify the greater density.
Well, I think, I think the pump station is one issue. The size of, the size of the actual force main in the ground is another issue. I know that Fred, Fred has talked about up-sizing again the force main, or excuse me, the actual line, the force main that's currently in the ground, and so that's a possibility, but under the terms of this agreement, it kind of is what it is right now. I think what you're talking about is, is looking at, you know, they're planning issues really on another track, and maybe a discussion for the very near future, but as far as the deal that we have right now.
But we feel that we did get the pump station and the six-inch force main that was part of this agreement?
Yeah, we're pretty confident after this time that those things are in place and have been operating since, you know, the late nineties.
And eighteen years free money, but other than that.
Yes.
Any further questions?
Eighteen years free money, and they've been paying for maintenance and operation.
The town is treating this as if it was, okay. And we've never been denied access to any of the facilities, nor I don't, I question as to whether or not we ever would be able to be denied access to those facilities, but this, this essentially formalizes a longstanding operational arrangement.
And when development occurs, there will be the collection of capital recovery fees that is designed specifically for these kinds of expenses?
Yeah, you could argue that, you could argue that we've already been collecting those recovery fees which go and pay for this upsize.
But not for this specific project. General projects, but not this one in specific.
Well, see, we haven't allocated, but I guess we're now going to allocate it towards this specific project.
Not for this particular train spacing, so you could do it on that basis as well. Because this is only going to serve a certain defined area.
Right, and for all those users in that area, they will be charged in capital recovery fees.
Same capital recovery fee, everybody's charged.
Right, okay.
Further questions? Is there a question? I'd like the town manager to prepare a budget amendment to upsize the wastewater force main and the lift station. Moved by Michael Fioke, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, we found some housework tonight, then. The next on our agenda is the manager's update on projects. Brian Griesberg?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I will, one item in particular with regards to the very first, very first piece that we would begin with would be the, on my memo, would be the additional elements, and Jeff, he won't talk at all about that. I think as of right now, we do not have, we do not have a copy of additional elements submitted. We have, have been informed that we can still anticipate those. As far as staff is concerned, we're ready to, ready to review and ready to outline a process for review in the very near future. Unified Development Ordinance has been moving along. You guys have been very active in that. The second joint meeting was held back, back on the eighteenth. Mr. Walden will be, Clarion will be assimilating the notes and producing a document for review and comment. The, Mr. Jones, town planner, will be scheduling a public review session upon completion of the module, and I don't know that we've decided on a format for that yet. But a good time, a good informative time will be had by all. Jeff has promised that. Downtown Vision Plan Traffic Circle, as mentioned previously, we've had a meeting on that on April twelfth at six-thirty PM. It was fairly well-attended. There is, it was also attended by Mr. Royal, town engineer, to talk about how the coordination of stormwater controls and the design of the northeast, forgive me, corner of the circle could be accommodated. I know those, those, the coordination of those improvements, at least by what Mr. Royal has indicated, sound favorable. I don't know if you have any additional comment on that to this point, but.
Working on the details right now.
So, that, that proceeds, and we'll, we'll have more information on that as we move forward. Town hall offices, I want to talk a little bit about some improvements that we'd like to make internally. They are relatively minor, but the place is a little bit different. The, up on our screen right now, you can see, I don't know if, let me enlarge this just a little bit. This is currently the, this is the, the old floor plan for the, for the town hall. I'm going to direct your attention over here to this is the area that was originally identified as the break room, and this is, this is where the glass, sort of the glass block windows are. My desk is located right here, previous to that Stewart was in it. Not so long ago, it was still a break room, but I think when we hired Mr. Bass, before my time, he moved in here, and then when Planning moved its offices over to Fayetteville Street, I took that office, and then we just sort of shifted and gave the finance officer a bigger office as well. If I see the complete plans, I, I have them, but I want to focus just on this area for now. The original area, this, this area right here, which now currently contains our refrigerator and our sink and our vending area and the time clock, labeled as vending is more or less what it is, remains what it is now. So, this is, this is, if you go over, go over, just slide over here, we have, we have this area being the boardroom. This area, this room right here, which is labeled copy room, you might remember when Paul Horn was, was located in town hall, his office was right here, it's just over here. Currently, we're using that for storage as Paul's old desk in. What, what we want to do, given some of our earlier discussions about need for more space and need for more storage area and need to kind of rehab our evidence storage and things of that nature, would be to allow me to move out of this room right here, move a couple of officers in here. We would move me into this area, but with a little bit of modification that would look something. This is a highly, highly engineered drawing that I've got going here. So, you can see, you can see where, all I literally did was erase a couple of lines. I would be taking out the wall that was right here and right here, and the door back in that corner of the room is a closet, and so I would be knocking out the room, knocking out the wall with the break room, knocking out this wall with the closet, and then knocking out this wall and essentially just creating a little bit larger space. No windows, but windows distract me anyway, so I would, I would be moving in here. We would have some sort of desk arrangement in here and possibly around here, and then we would, that would allow us to move some of the officers that are located over here over to here, and then we would be able to, Percy hasn't gone over how we would store, we haven't really firmly decided on how we would be changing the evidentiary storage at this point, other than currently our evidence room, which is located here where it says communications, is also in the same room, houses, our, our phone bank technology and our power switch, which means that every time, every time someone has to work on the phone system or someone has to do something with, with our fuse boxes or our powers or circuits, we have to track this person down right here, who's the only Troy Robertson, Lieutenant Robertson, is the only person that has the key to that room in the entire town, because, and that's by design, because obviously we want to limit, restrict, we want to limit access to our evidence, obvious reasons there. So, we want to, you know, we want to move, we want to move that to this location over here, but Percy and I haven't really worked out, and I don't know if you know what we have.
Yeah.
The only other thing that we would be working on would be if we go over to this area. Now, even the lobby area looks different than, than what we have right here. We currently have, we currently have walls in right here and right here, and we have a payments clerk right here. This is the area that Mayor Perry is holding, is holding some, some meetings and has been enjoying this little space right here, and is here, I believe, on Mondays. So, these, these walls are in place, they'll show up on the drive, but what we would be doing is, and there's a, there's a sort of a bar, half-wall area right here, we would be modifying this to allow access from the lobby to this door, limited access, we would, we would have to buzz people through or escort them through, but the idea being that we wouldn't have, that we would be taking people from, we're now coming to the rear of the building, they're coming into the rear of the building, or they're coming in through the lobby, and they're coming in through the lobby and around, and then coming through this way over here and then into the police station for meetings with the police department. And this is problematic only because our, our network server is in this area, our vault and our mail area is in this area, we've got a couple of shelves that people usually bump their heads on if they're not looking. So, we want to take this movement out of our daily operations and to the extent that it's necessary to escort people through here, open this area up, and we're actually, we're actually anticipating that relatively minor change to happen this week. So, so again, I would vacate my current office, this would be placed for, for police officers, you know, Paul Horn's old office. I would move in there, we would knock walls down, make it a little bit bigger, and then, and then move us around. The storage, we, I think, use this also as an opportunity to take a look at, and take a look at what things we need that we're currently storing, which can either be moved off-site to different dry storage or, or destroyed as allowable, if allowable by law in certain cases, and we've noticed that we have quite a few bank boxes with outdated information that can, can be shredded. So, we've looked at some firms to help us dispose of that information properly and free up a little bit more space on that account. So, again, continuing the conversation we had earlier about space, and I think making sure that we can at least get through for at least a couple more years until we've made a firm decision on what we're doing with the larger issue of how administrative space is arranged. We've come, come at this plan, I think, for, for an amount, under four thousand dollars, which we can fit under our, in our current budget. The estimate was actually thirty-two, so we're padding it to two-hundred dollars, so we're padding it a little bit. So, I will keep you, I will keep you close to that. If you guys have any comments, questions, concerns as we go along, please feel free to let me know, but hopefully this gets us a little bit closer to keeping us operationally efficient and legal, you know, as we figure out what we want to do in the future. With that, I would tap out and hope for any other comments, questions, concerns that you guys want to have. Thank you very much.
Questions for Brian Griesberg? Okay, then, do we have questions, sorry?
I do have some questions, but not on any of these items, but I don't want to jump. Fiddy's got a question.
I have a question on a couple of the items. Fred, you say you're working on the details, so it sounds like the design's pretty well in hand, and are you coordinating with Kimberly Horn so that they have the benefit of that design?
Okay.
Excellent, great, thanks.
And Delantheo, the owner of the Blair Building.
Accountant? No, okay, gotcha. One other thing about the UDO, I think we had a great meeting this last go-around, the discussion was fantastic. Played with lots of members of the planning board, and I discussed what a quality section it was and how we thought there was plenty more material to go through, and I mailed back and forth with Jeff a couple of times, and I thought he came up with a great idea, and I'd like to know if we can follow through with it, because I would definitely endorse it, and that is having a get-together, the two-hour get-together, same group, public come in as well every third Monday, every third Monday.
And I put that there for the foreseeable future. You know, we're on.
You know, we're on a UDO in Chatham Park's mills that could benefit from both boards having some time to discuss instead of having to react at a abnormal meeting. I have not discussed it with Plan B, I intend to do that next week. I wanted to get here, I thought you might bring it up tonight, so I want to hear some feedback from the town board on thoughts on that.
Well, I think it's a very good idea whether Rogers can attend or not.
Oh, and I don't think you mind? I think it would just be us.
Yep.
And hearing from me.
We can forward the information to him.
Or hearing from Fred, if we need to bring Fred in on a particular item or Paul with Parks or something like that, just for a time for us to get together with the two boards and have a, have a good discussion on planning efforts in the town.
So, it would just be designated as planning session. It's a mission to do, like a work session.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, and we could craft the language of note, how, public notice of how we do that moving forward.
And I don't know if we would give it any more structure because we did kind of meander through the doctrine, but that quite frankly might be the best way to do it because one thing leads to another and what about this idea?
Yeah, and as we go through with it and I need more pointed discussions on certain topics, I don't know what that might be at the moment. I would have an agenda prepared for that meeting saying, I need to have discussions on this element of Chatham Park because I need to be able to react to that or what have you. And I think it's good that if we have an agenda, we can let the public know what we're talking about, not just planning related items, but that's a little broad. So, we would, we would at the moment be talking about UDO. In the future, we'd be talking, we could be talking about UDO and/or Chatham Park.
I really felt like our discussions, we feel like we went off track. I felt like they were all in the point of discussion and I felt like I wasn't as effective, but I didn't think that was the real point.
Yeah, and certainly it would be left open to all board members to come, but understandably if someone could do that third Monday every so often or so, it would be interesting.
I feel too how great it was to work with the planning board, you know, just feel like we're all the same team, it's really great to get to know each other better.
I think in particular, our discussion about the arts and the way we worked through at times, she'd have to sort of herd the cats that were involved in that discussion, but it was still, I thought it was a really vibrant discussion.
It makes it really important that we continue with that because we do exchange a lot of ideas and things which we might not think about, the planning board thinks about, it's something that the planning board may not think about, we may think about. So, we can interact and exchange ideas and this with the UDO, the last two were great. It was great out there.
I'll bring it up at the next Monday's meeting and we'll go to later. And if it's a go, then I'll go ahead and work with Alice and schedule that.
That's what I do.
Yep.
We have one last agenda item, which is the finance officer's summary report for fiscal year through March 31st. Is Heather, Heather Meecham, our financial director, here to do this?
Good evening. I'm going to keep this short and brief, so I just want to highlight some of the areas that I noticed compared to last year and then also just sort of the areas where our year-to-date, we are over 100%. So, two revenue areas where we're over 100% year-to-date already are our motor vehicle and the Powell bill. And the Powell bill, I mean, that's money, we were the same last year at this time. We just, we budget 120,000 and it looked like last year we received 124,000 as well, give or take a few hundred. So, those are two revenue areas. In the general fund where we're over 100%, we are also over 100% on two expenditure areas. However, the transfers to capital projects, that is for the Pocket Park project and we will be making, we actually have funds in another account that we need to, from the donations that were not moved with the last budget amendment, so we will be making another amendment to that and we will be fine. So, and that project is complete. And then the legal is currently over year-to-date, so we are looking to get some reimbursements for those fees, so then we will be back under 100%. So, there's no budget concerns with those areas. And then I just wanted to compare to last year, our property taxes. Year-to-date, last year, we were, at the same time, we were at 94% and so this year we're already at 96%, so we're doing a little bit better there on collections. And then our water and sewer fund, we are higher on our, on our late fees and penalties than we were last year in terms of year-to-date collected and I think that's mostly due to our fees had increased from the last year. So, but please let me know if you have any questions and also you don't have to ask me questions tonight. If you don't want to, you're welcome to stop by my office anytime, so.
Any questions for Heather Meecham? Thank you, Heather. Moving now at Commissioner's Concerns. Mr. Barnes, would this be a good time for your, for your question or input?
Brian, here, Manager Brusbeck, curious about the status of the RFQ for the financial advisor. Sorry, I've been out of pocket, but last, I understood you were going to receive.
We received proposals for evaluating them, we'll have a recommendation shortly.
Okay. And you went out for, you held out for a little bit more proposals, I think?
Yes, I received one additional proposal.
Good. Can you share a brief highlight of the role of this, whatever firm it would be, that you would expect from this contract?
Well, as I indicated in previous materials discussion, the, there would be assistance on a gamut of projects dealing not only with future development, but current operations, our revenue structures, the, also to assistance in terms of any future bonding that would be necessary, development agreements. Essentially, we were looking for a full-service financial advisory firm that had experience with, you know, with development, but also current operations.
Great, thank you. And interesting to hear from Heather that late fees and penalties are up as a revenue stream and that, that's something I did hear from constituent about, as you know, and I, it was a surprise to me that there was such a significant increase in those fees, the late fees, penalties for reconnect. I guess I'm fortunate that I've been able to pay that bill automatically and I've never had cost to know that there were significant penalties for not payment and then having it reconnected. So, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if other commissioners are aware of the pretty stiff nature of those fees, because it kind of feels to me like if somebody's not able to pay their bill and then we hit them with a really traumatic fee, it goes beyond deterrent effect and it really becomes a punitive measure on folks who are least capable of paying their water bill. I'm not saying that we should allow them to string along, but I wasn't privy to the discussion the prior board, when this decision was made.
I mean, the board did have a discussion during the last budgeting process and elected through the budget ordinance to increase, increase penalties and fees compared to previous year.
And there, but at this point, is it a percentage of the, Heather?
So, you get a late fee of 10% or $5 if you're bound at less than 50% of the past of the month of the month. So, if you don't pay on it, it's still on its own. And then we have a reconnection fee of $45. So, if you don't pay by the end of the month, you have a balance on the first of the month, then your liability, your subsidy is cut off. And those fees are very comparable to other towns. So, I think the big jump was because we weren't, we had left it for a while and then, but we are in line with the fees that other towns charge and even some of our fees are still lower than, you know.
So, if someone is having trouble paying their bill, what's our policy about working with them? Do they make payments or do we have any?
I mean, we do try to, but we don't, I mean, that's not our current, our current poli, I mean, we don't have a set policy for payment plans or anything like that, but that's, I mean, definitely something that we have.
Remember that would address your concern, Heather, that to have some authority for someone who's just having trouble getting, they know that the money needs to be raised.
Yeah, this constituent made a payment, but it was apparently an inadequate payment to, because it didn't, she wasn't even aware of the late fee had had it on. So, in her mind, she'd made the complete payment, but she hadn't according to our accounts and that resulted in a disconnect, so she feels like she's making progress and still got disconnected, situations like that. It was very reasonable, in my perception, in her communication of the problem and she suggested perhaps this is simply an information management issue where our accounting system could take note of received payments after a past due bill has been, has gone out and address that action appropriately, perhaps defer that period of disconnect if a payment has been made.
Right, and so that would be a change also in our policy, I mean, not just in noting it in the account, so I mean, that would be something we would have to discuss further. And we are, right now, we are serving some other towns in terms of, you know, fees and stuff like that and different fee structures because we just have the, it's too different. We have the late pay, you know, the penalty for late payment or for non-payment and then the essential is the cutoff, so.
And where do we stand on improving our transaction trend minutes with regard to different forms of payment acceptance?
That's something, I mean, that I'm, I'm figuring where it was sort of left off and we're, I mean, something that's definitely on the top of the priority.
That's really good to pin down.
All right, are there other, other matters?
I'm tempted to ask Jay's question from last month about where we stand with regard to some of these properties that are not occupied and not helping the town.
I think we talked about addressing the UDO.
We did. I also drafted a letter to those property owners who own abandoned properties on Hillsborough Street and ran it by Brian Brusbeck and Poem Ethic and I think we're making some degree of progress with respect to notifying them that this will not be, that we'd just like to know their plans and that if their plans are not such that something will be brought into compliance, that we are going to be working through the UDO to get a more efficient structure to deal with abandoned properties. So, I think it's.
Thank you.
Somewhat in the works.
That's great to know.
I just have one, I had several citizens in town that came to me recently about the Thompson Street, the traffic that is, if you come up Thompson Street, if there's any possibility of having another left turn put in there, either Monday through Friday or maybe just certain times today, traffic really gets backed up, back down Thompson Street when you've got one or two cars wanting to make a left-hand turn. I don't know how many.
On the Hillsborough?
Yes, right at this is a piece of that. If we can just keep that straight or either right-hand turn only, I always judge a light because I like congestion at Cambridge. I don't want to be a cutthroat DOT for that, being a city street.
I'll have to be on the turn signal.
Folks can use the light, go a block over and use the light, I do.
Yeah, I think they have a rule of stuff they can't turn left in the day, so we won't turn in the morning, so that's tricky.
Well, I too had a Thompson Street complaint this past couple of weeks, except it dealt with speeding on Thompson Street. And as we begin to develop the Lily's Academy property and build out Chatham Park issues there on Thompson Street, I know we're going to be looking at some major improvements there, but I mentioned it to Chief Percy Crutchfield and there were cars, police cars patrolling more frequently, I noticed, on Thompson Street, so public beware. So.
There was a post by citizens who are complaining about the pavement condition on Fitzborough Elementary School Route where it takes a 90-degree turn. I have gone by and there are some potholes and it's pretty rough through there, so I looked for our document about pavement assessment and I did not find in the document that I have a list of improvements, so I am missing.
Doesn't matter, I mean, if something, if it's a situation where we do notice severe degradation in pavement somewhere, you know, we're not, we're not shackled.
Found by a list and got it, okay. Well, I'd like to just put that on to the list, go take a look at that, see if it wants correction. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is what Heather brought up today, earlier in the meeting about the Fourth of July, need for $1,100. I would like for, in cooperating with PVA and putting Main Street program, to see if we've got that in the budget.
The $1,100 is not an issue, it's not, it's not, I ain't no way, shape or form ever represented it as being an issue as far as payment goes. I think, I think Chief Crutchfield and myself are clear with Heather and with a couple of the others that she's dealt with on that. On a July 3rd weekend, on the July 3rd weekend, it's probably the busiest vacation weekend of the year for a police officer, what's needed according to Chief Crutchfield's estimation to close off 15501, a state highway, is 12 officers to manage the roadblocks over a seven-hour period, which is what she's asking for. And at $30 an hour, that, you know, that, I forget what the amount is, that goes up over $5,000 and Chatham Park gracefully agreed to cover a portion of that. But the $1,100 isn't really so much the challenge, it's finding 12 cable-bodied officers to staff the barricades and to, you know, assist traffic pedestrians in and around the area. Of course, we have, we have 13 or 14 total officers in our department and obviously, even if we deployed all of them on a July 3rd weekend, pavement overtime, you know, we don't, we don't have enough, so we're kind of at the mercy of area departments and what we can bring in, so that, that's the bigger challenge there. And I haven't, I haven't committed, you know, to guarantee, to guarantee that until we know more about who's available.
So, she had mentioned, I think, three hours that weren't part of the program at this point, did she say that? She said three hours that she's needing to cover herself.
I don't understand.
I thought they could maybe find, I think there's some smaller town, like I said, the larger sized towns would be using their separate departments.
Yeah, I know, I just, I just, sometimes I have to be the guy that shares bad news and the bad news on that weekend is a lot of people take that off.
Right, no, I understand.
Otherwise, we, we will continue to be supportive of the downtown, continue to contribute money and staff in the downtown, just like we did this past weekend.
So, is the PVA be responsible for what K has been responsible for?
I'm not sure what the PVA is responsible for, actually. I mean, it's, it's. I'm not sure what the PBA is responsible for, actually, I mean, it's, 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 the, the, the other, the other missing piece on this, the other unknown, is the DOT has to actually approve the application, and, you know, so, so in, as part of that application, they would be, they would be looking at, at traffic management, routing traffic around the downtown area, and making sure everything moves safely, and, you know, covering any of that contingency, and I don't think the PBA is equipped to do that, and that's going to be on the table, yeah.
Well, I appreciate you working with them, and it sounds like we don't have a financial issue, if we can get the forces to the table, and so appreciate you working with the PBA, it's an important group to be working with, and part of the Main Street program.
What was the time on that street closing?
They have requested 2:19, which is longer than anything we've done on the streets.
Is it back the plan, if DOT doesn't approve it, might be?
I gave them two other options, I suggested, I suggested a shorter timeframe, which would obviously be less expensive, and I suggested something similar to what we do with the street, or, which doesn't require any DOT participation, and would reduce 12 officers down to two or three, but I think if you attended the Northwood event that was held over by the courthouse, that, that was smooth, incredibly smooth. I think, I think they're seeing a value, the PBA is seeing a value in trying to get the event on the front door of, assuming those businesses are open, but they're trying to get them on the event, to the front door of the businesses in the downtown area, as opposed to just off the street areas, or, or that's where.
Who's the type of business, so there was a complaint from the downtown business, I think it was the downtown business owner, who said they were notified about being working with the industrial owners responsibility, but that would be helpful to do something to downtown regions, you know, that.
Well, my gut is that if, if the street work goes, that there would be more traffic, more foot traffic, I mean, and more, more people spending more money in downtown, but as a business owner, Jay, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, we voted for it, so anyway, but I like, like Mr. Gruzbeck said, I think he said that on Chatham Street this weekend was an excellent, excellent place, it's in your room, people like the street, you can still get this down, businesses are open, they are open on Sunday, we don't have it being open on Sunday, so.
Well, this is first Sunday, so I think they're more open than, than when you're.
Thank you.
And Michael?
Again, what Michael gets, somebody told me about that Main Street, look up the bill, being those points, that's it.
John Vonn, anything further? Motion to adjourn?